Yeah.
Three, two, one.
Yay.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Select board meeting of March twenty, uh, March thirteenth, May twenty-four. Now, let's see.
Can we get too far into the meeting? I'd like to say that we have an issue with Cordy TV. It's not recording, it's not broadcasting. The channel was hosted by somebody who owned a tower on Scottsville Road in East Montalius. They sold the tower and whoever bought it apparently tore it down. We have no broadcast. Spectrum's working on it.
They have Facebook, right?
Just Facebook Live, so apparently Cordy TV has volume, but no picture. But I don't know how long that will, that'll be there.
So can this Facebook Live actually be put on our website? Some people can review it or is there maybe another one?
The other one was, I don't know. If it's written on, if it's on our, it's on our.
If someone's on the Facebook thread, they can add that one to the.
Oh, she probably can, but I know if you go right on the town of Leveque right now, it should say Town of Leveque Live.
Right, I'm just saying normally they can go on our website. So my question was, can it be on the website like it normally is afterwards?
It is on the website. Oh, sorry, the website, no, I'm thinking of Facebook page. I won't tear up the penic, she should be able to copy and paste, I would think.
Because I know that, um, I've had some patients and I think that Renee usually, I think it's through YouTube.
We don't have that anymore.
Well, maybe we should consider it. My point only being, I really think people should be directed to our webpage, not Facebook.
Yeah, and we agree, but YouTube is charging like a hundred bucks.
Uh, it might be something we should think about because, you know, I love promo.
I don't know, that was Renee's here, so we can wait for it. But we can check into it.
Okay, I think we have an assessor meeting, which is around here.
I didn't know he was gonna be here.
Okay. So we're gonna open the assessors meeting, can we see Jim anywhere?
He's right there in the second room.
Oh, there, hiding in the audience. Do you wanna come up and have a seat or stand here?
Sure, if you want, or I can just stand up.
But, yeah, whatever you like.
What do you wanna do, Jim?
Okay, well. How contagious are you, Jim?
Just speak.
How contagious are you?
I don't think I'm very contagious at all.
Just the personality.
I'll come up if you like. Whatever you want.
It's mono.
So welcome back. Thank you for taking the part in that assessor job.
It feels good to be back, I think.
Good.
So you've been working on coordinating the reassessment with making sure all of the accounts are, are in order.
Yeah, I'm doing a, what I would call a, not a deep forensic, but a audit of some of the important things that will weigh on the commitment when that time comes. And so I'm taking a look at a broad sweep, looking for anything that stands out that's either an error, a mission, or whatever. There, there are some requests from the public, from the citizens on the table that I'm trying to catch up with, gather up and deal with those as excretiously as possible. Folks have been delayed in getting what they perceive as equitable justice.
Do we have any?
Isn't that always the matter? And, and so, as you know, I'm very sensitive to, to that. So there will be a couple of items that I'll be, having looked at already a few things, that I'll be proposing some changes down. Have I run across any that will require increases yet? But I just think there will be some balancing in the, to the process that, and of course, as you all know, that never ends. It's an ongoing process that pops up as time goes by.
Do we have any, anything on the agenda for today?
No, I have no specific items to go over with you all. I've been working, I've got things in the hopper that will manifest in a few weeks. Let me know where we are. And, you know, we'll go from there.
So you're kind of coming once a month?
Well, I've committed to show up a total of two days a month here.
And it's gonna be coordinated with our, our select board days, hopefully?
Uh, yes, I'm gonna try to coordinate one of those days I'll be here to do whatever in office visits from people for abatements and supplements and new ads and changes. And I'll continue to delve into the, uh, you know, there's a, already I've uncovered a field assessment load that's existent right now. Folks are wanting me to come out and look at the properties and do onsite assessments.
Are you trying to coordinate that kind of like in one afternoon or one day?
Yes, yes.
Makes sense.
I'll try.
So you're making your own appointments?
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I'm trying to build up a schedule of those and kind of trying to coordinate them with folks so I can come in the morning and run around and do them and maybe get them done that day and just depends.
Makes sense. Well.
And then there's, I have the option to add more time if needed.
Right.
For time sensitive and the NADA sign, things that need, must be done in order to meet estate requirements. There'll be a few of those. But all in all, I've, I've just gotten my feet wet this last month and I don't see any mushroom clouds out there. So, you know.
You saw, oh, hang on. Good.
Yeah. There's gotta be a signing somewhere online, but, you know, it's inevitable. Any questions?
No, welcome back, thanks.
Well, we're looking forward to seeing you, uh.
I'll, I'll do the best I can with what I've got to work with here. It's, uh, you know, nothing's forever.
At least, at least a lot of it's on computer now, which is great. A lot of pictures are on the computer.
A lot of the, a lot of the, nothing bolts, the, you know, the, the, uh, the valuations.
So you don't have to go to the cards anymore, you can go right to the computer for a lot of it. So I think that's really good.
Absolutely.
You did a lot of work, tedious work like that, I think that's helpful.
Well, yeah, it does speed things up, but then, you know, as things change, hopefully new pictures will be taken and new drawings made to keep it from getting old too fast, you know. But, uh, that, that's certainly helpful to be able to go in and use the computer to do all the calculations. As you know, I used to run a hybrid system where I would have to make adjustments and integrate the manual world with the automated world and that could become rather tedious at times.
That's what she did.
She was rather tedious, I think, if you ask her, you know, put it all in there.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, so no questions, then I'm gonna shut up and leave you alone.
Okay. No questions yet.
All right.
Maybe next time.
Take it easy.
Okay.
Get better.
Bye now. So, okay, so we're gonna get out of the assessors meeting, open the select board meeting, and we need a motion to sign the warrants.
I'll make a motion to sign the warrants.
Okay.
All in favor?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from everywhere twenty-eight.
Let's have more.
Second.
I'm sorry, what are we giving the minutes? All in favor?
Minutes of every day.
Working fast on we guys. All right. All right, yeah, three minutes. So all business things building, so we're gonna be reviewing this without the CEO there?
Yes, he was in Blue Hill and wasn't gonna make it.
So is that, I think Davis will have to do that, or do we need to wait for him?
Well, you can, I would like to know, the neighbors to the property, the senior packet, came to me and wanted to know, there's a little blurb I wrote, why that building has not been considered dangerous and.
Is it not even on the list?
It's on the list.
So it's not a dangerous one?
It is, but they said they're trying to start a business there and the CEO and health officer have been up there to check it out and they just wanna know, basically, you know, why wasn't anything done with it?
Twelve, twelve, fifteen buildings, some are on the list right now.
I don't know about all the ones. It's quite a few.
Quite a few. So I think our priority was in town.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, unfortunately, it answers.
And unfortunately, we have, what, about ten thousand dollars to buy it to work, to work on all the.
Less than that, I think, right? Well, no, I guess it's in New York.
All the dangerous buildings and.
Which place is this, Suzette?
The one.
It's right there.
Right across from H and D's.
Almost right across from.
Across from H and D's now. Well, and.
This might put the tax tag.
So the answer to her is, the answer is, it is on the dangerous buildings, but it's not the first one.
Right, it's not the first one, good answer, you know, unfortunately. And I don't know that.
It's not just our town, but it's all the towns in Maine all have problems with dangerous buildings and dangerous factories. We try to concentrate on the ones that where the most traffic would be, foot traffic would be, so that they don't go in and teenagers, kids don't get in there and so concentrate on the town.
I mean, the other thing, the other thing to look at is the ones that are out in the woods. If they catch fire.
Well, that's true too.
If it ever dries out, we could have forest fire. Not now so much, but if it dries out, I mean, so they're all dangerous.
So he needs to come in with the listing and we need to go prioritize it again. And that's a really good point.
I like the numbers that was shared here. Did you guys get a chance to look at this?
That's why I sent it ahead of time, because it's into details, not like you're building dangerous.
Process yesterday, wasn't it?
No, I sent that, I sent that quite a while ago. The dangerous building email from Sally.
Oh, with the letter, yeah, that was.
I thought you meant the one that laid in that door. She just came in.
Yeah, she came in for the last week and I put it on the agenda.
Yeah. It did a good job of spelling out kind of the process and how we, as how we could recover some of our expenses as well.
Yeah.
And we're having to take that action, but I thought it was well written.
Well, we can't get any money back unless the, unless it goes to tax.
Yeah.
It takes like three years now, you should be able to bill it. So what we have to do is condemn the property, knock it down, pay for it ourselves, then assess, put it on the taxes as a tax assessment, additional, and then wait three years and if they don't pay, bill that and if they're probably not gonna pay, so it's a huge burden on the taxpayer.
And the reality is that ten thousand a year will take down one house a year.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? So if, well, when you look at the back. Right. May, uh, maybe, right, you know, that the reality is that budget line should be much bigger.
I agree, you know, budget season is coming.
And another thought on, on mine on that one was, that is a joint ownership and only one owner is, looks like they're getting the notices. So if the second owner, co-owner could be tracked down, knowing that this process could happen and might stir the first owner to do something. I don't know, it's worth a thought.
Absolutely, I think. If there's two owners, they both need to be notified.
If we can find a contact information for the other owner.
Well, that's the one from twenty years ago, you know.
Problem is upping the budget is.
Things are gonna up there.
Tax payers.
Yes, things are gonna up that we have no control over, that we're gonna have to.
How like a.
That we. Other things are gonna have to be.
We need to have a public hearing on how much money they wanna put aside for dangerous buildings. We need to hold the public, dangerous building public, how it's gonna be on us for many years and then if it goes and it taps default, it's this new rule that you don't, we don't know, we don't get the profit from it now.
No.
So it's.
Would that do, would it?
The owner.
No, we have, you have to get.
It's a state mandate.
Yeah.
But we get to recoup any expenses.
All we get is our expenses back.
Attorney fees, steam, searches, all of it.
But I wonder, would that qualify also where it's not just a normal tax foreclosure? Is that actually a dangerous building special tax?
Well, you're gonna get all the, yes, you're gonna get all of that back.
Yeah, but I'm saying where it's a different.
Even if the property, most of the time the property's not worth what you put, what you put into it.
Where if it's like, if it's, okay, you forego my house and I don't pay and I'm the agent, I qualify, I get the money back. But if it's a home that's non-livable, why would you be forced to give that money back to the person that's not living in it anyway? But it says there may be a little bit of a legal there where we might be able to keep that little bit of money.
Yeah, you might be.
That might be something illegal to knock it now, but check out.
Right, absolutely.
So are we all in agreement that we should have dangerous building along with the CEO here for the public?
Yes.
Yeah, I think.
Should we, like, come up with a date now because spring is coming?
Do we wanna attach it to already meeting?
Well, our meetings go back to six, so we could have it at five. Our meetings go back at six to the next, uh, April, after April fifteenth.
We've got one more meeting at, no, at this time.
One more meeting at this time?
Yes. Sorry, no. We have my, sorry, thank you, Phil, we've got one the twentieth at five and then on April tenth at five.
So the one after that?
Is on the twenty-fourth and be at six.
Why don't we do that? Well, on April twenty-fourth, that'll be a good time, we'll talk about dangerous buildings, we'll be in budget season and maybe we can get the town to agree to up the line.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, why don't we wait until we go through the budget?
Yeah.
The budget session and present it to our meeting, say, hey, you know, it's gonna be, we're looking for fair.
Well, yes, but you're gonna have to have feedback, you're gonna shove it in the budget line and then end up in the annual town meeting. We're, we're talking about a public hearing.
A public hearing to say, would you like to talk about the woes and unhappiness on dangerous buildings?
I think, I think it's a good idea to have the public hearing, not just around the dangerous buildings, just around the whole preparation for the budget committee move forward, building the budget. Because when you look at the commitment that the county now has obligated to, when you look at the commitment that the school administration, just the administration has this commitment to.
What would you propose at the meeting before?
To prioritize funding, I mean.
Budget priority.
Right, because I mean, you know, our job is to build the budget, but I agree, to build the budget, to build the budget, really what are things are gonna cost with what already is in there before the school settles local and before the town identifies, like what public works needs.
Well, I think we would, we should probably then have, what would you call it?
Like a, a public, uh, priority.
Discretionary funds.
Well, really.
There's going to be a budget where we have to do the budget.
Right.
Or money that's not open for discussion.
Correct.
So I think we should identify.
Those areas.
What areas that are open for discussion. And then put that in, on the public hearing.
And then, you know, um.
Maybe like in May, maybe, that'll give us a couple.
Well, and that'll, and that'll help prioritize really.
Anything that, yeah.
Well, we can expect next year around dangerous buildings. You know, we can be realistic when we answer to people, well, you know, we're probably gonna tear down maybe two buildings next year.
Do we have a, a motion to set a public hearing for discretionary line items that the public wants to input?
Yeah, public input on the budget. And that would be April twenty-fourth. Five o'clock. Okay. And our meeting starts at six o'clock, that. Oh, exciting.
A second, do I have a second? All in favor? Okay, Consolidated Communications.
You want me to come up there?
Please. There, that is actually, that one, that's long the phone.
Okay.
So they'll be able to hear you.
So, hi, name is Simon Thorn, I work with Consolidated Communications. I wanted to come and talk about broadband and BEED funds that are coming available at some point this year. I think it's probably a bigger discussion than we should have right now. It will take some time to get through. So I would offer up to do a Zoom meeting with those who are interested and we can kind of dive into the process, what it looks like, timeline, and what it means for Leveque and the surrounding areas.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have if you want, or we can just save that to the Zoom meeting. I know you've got a lot of things on your plate, so I don't wanna take up a lot of time.
So I did, spoke to people you earlier and you assured me that this is going to be funding and for broadband, for consolidated, to oversee and would not require the town to give any money or any maintenance or any billing, none of that would be our responsibility.
Right.
That was.
It, it would be owned by us, it would be maintained by us. I think something that I would just put before you now to kind of think on is that part of the process that we will go through, there is an opportunity for the town to give a letter of support.
That's what I was thinking. You want us behind, behind you.
And that just adds weighting to the scoring if there are multiple bidders to the area. I know that probably doesn't make a lot of sense, because I don't, I'm not giving you any of the information to follow up on that right now, but there's a scoring process, everything is weighted and that.
I think we're aware of the grant.
Yeah, really.
Okay, okay, okay.
And yes, if you're assuring us that the grant goes consolidated and it services the Leveque community and broadband and you're gonna bill and maintain the equipment, I don't have any, I personally think that's a great idea.
I agree too.
I just have one, one question.
Emails, okay.
I, and they might want those, I just have one question in regards to the commitment of Consolidated in regards to expanding the broadband fiber to those really rural folks way up the end of the road that for years now have been promised and have sat while grant processing has happened and like did not get the money and could not have explained to us why we didn't get the money because we met all parameters, but we still have folks that are waiting for years to get some broadband. And we've had a lot of people come in and say things and they get some of it on the busy roads and they get some of it a little up Coldline, but it's like nobody way out over there here, you think? What's your commitment to those numbers?
So I will tell you that the BEED funds that are coming are committed to the locations that have no service. They're committed to, to the locations that have no spectrum service. So, so I would, I would say, join the Zoom meeting, let's talk about it.
Martha has a question.
Hello.
Hi.
How will this BEED grant interface with your prior ARDOF grant? And where are you on fulfilling the requirements of the ARDOF grant?
Excellent question. So, um, BEED funding will help us fund the locations that are not in the ARDOF areas. We're hoping to put it together as one package to build the whole thing versus just building to our ARDOF locations. Timeline for ARDOF, we have certain metrics to meet every year. We have ARDOF throughout the state. So the way to look at it is, if BEED funds are a way for us to service the whole region versus just what we've been awarded. ARDOF was not the best program that's ever come out. It's, I'm trying to be, I'm, it's, it's very expensive to get to those locations. So as a company, we're hoping that this is a way to bring the cost down. We're committed to funding, to, to building our ARDOF, we do not plan to remit on any of that. But as long as we meet a percentage each year of how much we need to bill, that is, that's our goal right now. And we're, we're trying to wait for BEED to play out. So I'm just gonna take just a minute if I, if I can.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, so the Maine Connectivity Authority, they're the ones that are in charge of the BEED for the state of Maine. And what they're doing is they're taking, they're in the process of taking towns, right? Taking the state of Ma, Maine and breaking it up into clumps. And then they're going to court ISPs to bid on those clumps, if you will. And so we're, we are really waiting to see what those clumps look like, what makes sense, and where do we go after, right? What do we try to bid on? We do plan to be aggressive. So I know that probably isn't really much of an answer, but I wanna tell you honestly what I know and don't tell you something that I don't know. So I would just encourage anybody that has interest to join in the meeting and we can take as long as people want and we can ask as many questions as people want. With the understanding that I only have the information that I have today and that the Maine Connectivity Authority is the keeper of the information. It's a process that's going.
We're very familiar with that.
We're slowly coming to that understanding, so.
I have a question, Simon.
Sure.
Monthly, do we have any idea what the average cost per house would be to access here?
Yeah, so we have four speed tiers today, the lowest being a hundred meg. Everything I say is symmetrical, so it's the same down, same up. And then the upper one is two gig. The hundred meg is twenty-five dollars a month for the first year and then it goes to forty-five dollars a month. Those are, those, this is the pricing today, okay?
What it's paid.
Pricing can change, so.
Sure.
And then the two gig, I believe, quote me, but I believe it's seventy dollars a month for the first year and then ninety-five dollars a month thereafter. If, if you're interested and you have the ability, I know this is a bit of an oxymoron, but if you have the ability to get online, if you go to fidiamfiber.com, it will tell you what we have.
Well, and that's what I'm looking at, is I'm just thinking rural areas and I really, I run a trailer, cellular.
Yeah.
Everywhere, fixed and, you know, I can get off that system quite readily without penalties.
Yeah.
And I'm also thinking Starlink.
Yeah.
So just comparatively, are we talking the same monthly? Like, once we have this endorsement from the board and saying, hey, yeah, let's do the broadband, are we now stuck with pricing that will be on the panel for folks in five years?
Yeah, okay, that, that's really good. So our pricing is statewide. It's not pricing for Leveque and pricing for East Portland, right? It's statewide. Where that comes into play is, Leveque doesn't really have a lot of competition, but Portland does.
Yeah.
Right, Augusta does. So our pricing is statewide, we have to keep the pricing reasonable, otherwise we lose folks in Portland. There's at least four or five other competitors down there. We don't have contracts, there's no installation fee, so you can try us. If you don't like us, you call and cancel.
And no one has a contract.
But the, the reason behind the introductory price is, we believe once you try the service, you'll like it and you won't want to leave.
I mean, for two gigs, that's pretty reasonable per month.
Yeah, and there's no data cap, you know, you can use it as much as you want.
Something that, yeah, that was consolidated.
Well, that's good to know that you're, you're averaging out in the state so that the competition's down. It's out, it helps us out because they know you're not gonna come down just because we have nobody else.
Right.
Do you have a card you can link with us? No.
We had a motor vehicle accident about a week ago and had to get out of the car and move into a rental and I don't have any cards with me. But Suzette asked my contact information.
Yeah, okay, email, yeah.
And.
When would you wanna do a Zoom meeting about this?
Uh, sooner the better.
Well, I mean, do you really know anything? Like, you know, are there any decisions that are made around dates and filing and?
I don't have that. I anticipate that the MCA will be able to start the process within the next two weeks.
Oh, okay, okay, good.
But I would just say that there's a lot of information.
Sure.
And it's good to know it before that process starts, because people can be involved in it. Right, the resident, the residents of the community can be involved in proving whether they have this level of speed or this level of speed.
I just would like you to have a date in mind so that our next meeting, we can announce that and give people enough time to sign up. So it would have to at least be three weeks.
And would they be able to like, could we give townspeople or something like an email that they could reach out to, you know, we could put it up on our website and then they could get themselves an opportunity for that Zoom meeting or something like that?
Well, you can send an invite to us and then.
Yes, I would say, it would be more sense for me to coordinate.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And then anybody that wants to join can join and we can take as long as we want.
They can post it on the town calendar, the link and everything for the Zoom, thank you.
So pick your name or you can send us a name, no, no.
Suzette and I will work.
And then we'll be after next meeting so people have a chance to know about it. Well, I don't think we've set a date yet.
Okay. Any other questions, I'll get out of your hair.
Did a great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a shake, turn back.
Gretchen is not here, so we're gonna take.
No, no, Melissa, Melissa's here.
So I am clearly not tricking you, Melissa.
Well, I do know.
So I.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Went traveling last year and saw these banners.
They're coming up here.
Thank you.
On light poles that were just stunning. And I mentioned it to Gretchen, who's an artist and a doer, and she got all excited. So this is an idea that we wanted to run by you guys to do either sale cloth or, um.
Flags on the, on the clothes.
Flags on the clothes.
Set it just walking up in the middle of that.
And they could, you know, alternate welcome, yeah. Yeah, and they could, you know, alternate welcome, yeah. So, um, you know, they have a little saying, we're self-reliant. We call Lebec home.
Can you show them this way too?
Sure, sure.
Put make them in the flag.
This is the one we call.
It's a great idea.
This is, we are.
We're not.
We are connected.
I like that.
We are, we are people of the sunrise.
I love Gretchen, that's a. Well, we love Gretchen.
Yeah.
Yeah. We are water people. We are music.
All of us is the best one.
And fog lives here.
Yes, 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 those are great.
Oh, it's really nice.
So you can get them, what, screen printed on or flags, is that what you're thinking?
I guess so.
Turns into a flag and then you put them on the poles, like, like the welcome to Lebec?
Yeah. Right, so there are.
Like a water sheep.
There are sixteen poles and there are eight of these signs.
So she was gonna alternate between, um, welcome to Lebec and one of those welcome, I love it.
Yeah, I love it.
I love it.
Remember Lois Johnson did that huge fish?
Yeah, it's amazing.
That is now in the library, yeah, that would be great, yeah.
That would be.
Can you, can you fly a sign?
Oh.
Yeah.
Well.
Uh-huh, as flags?
So we make, I make a motion that we accept her designs. All in favor?
Yes.
And then how about, would be, be funding for the flags?
So the idea is, um, there are two sold right now, people who have said that they will contribute to, to do these and, um.
They're gonna do like one flag each?
Yeah.
So what's the estimated cost of the flag?
Well, if, if she has a, a price on vinyl, but I think it needs to be on sailcloth.
Yeah, it would be something, something a little sturdy.
Yeah, otherwise the vinyl will last for a few years.
I think vinyl will rip. Yeah, it'll rip too.
Um, so I don't know, the cost on sail, um, vinyl is a hundred and thirty each.
So you'll follow us along, let Suzette know and you'll let her, and we'll talk about it and tell people.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah.
We're looking.
And so we're gonna sponsorship, we can.
We're, we're not asking for the town to pay any of this.
Right. But we can make it and talk about it.
What we would, yeah, what we would like the town to be part of is putting them up and down.
Mm-hmm, there's, see, there's a man right there.
I mean, you put up the welcome signs anyway, the welcome signs anyway. Um, and the one other thing.
They'll be the same size as the welcome.
Oh, yeah, I would like to know what that size is.
Okay.
And right now, there's just the one pole on top.
The one on the bottoms, we, we take them down in the wintertime when we, when we take those down.
Oh, but they use this.
Yeah, they use this.
It slides on the top and the bottom.
That's cool.
Okay, happy.
That's nice.
We like it.
We like that.
Great, um, great.
Is this the same thing that Wanda, Wondery was talking about?
No. We did, yeah, yeah.
That's veterans.
No.
That's veterans?
Yeah, it's totally different.
Okay, 'cause she's got.
That's what I'm asking you for.
Once on telephone poles.
'Cause it's two different, it's two different things. Okay, 'cause she's got sizes and the, the, um, Veresten has sizes that they require.
Well, this, this is on all.
I just want to be sure that I was, had the right, same thing going, so it wasn't getting crossed.
Thanks, Melissa, that's very.
Yeah, and Gretchen, you know, Gretchen's artwork is hopefully.
Oh, I would say, yes.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Cornhole update. Oh, um, we had the small things court and the defendant didn't show, so it was awarded by judgment. The next step was wait thirty days to see if he appealed or contacted, asked for payment or payment arrangements or anything. Nothing's been contacted, so I went to the next step, which was a disclosure hearing filed on paper of proof of income assets for the last two years to see, you know, meet him, yes.
We're on a cornhole debacle, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
So that was filed today and they'll send us a letter when you have to be there.
So, you know, they, they can, and the court can set up a payment plan.
Yeah.
Whatever. Well, you're learning a whole lot about it, it may come in handy.
Really?
Sewer commitment, you have a sewer commitment here. So the sewer commitment for this quarter is forty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-one. Do I have a motion to accept this? All in favor? Single audit add, so in order, when you, what is it, two hundred thousand, if it's more than four hundred thousand?
If it's more than seven hundred fifty thousand, we need a single audit. We're not going to need it for the fiscal year ending June of twenty twenty-four, I put that right. But looking ahead and talking to Mandy, we see all of our hallway, um, it's looking like we will most likely need it for the fiscal year ending twenty twenty-five.
So we have to put this out to get someone?
Well, we should because the.
Yeah, because there's not a lot of.
Yeah, really, there's not a lot of them, so.
That's, we need, and we're gonna need it for, um, possibly, well, no, for the sewer one anyway.
That's the one, yes, so if we start now, maybe we can get someone before, 'cause if not, I, I don't know what happens if we don't get it.
See, where are you, there's a special place you can put this, not just the regular paper.
Yeah, there's the auditors.
The auditors.
Yeah, and I've contacted the auditor, the audit board previously and gotten a list of people that they say that, you know, really recommend. Even our auditors recommended and even the calls I made at the time were very far and few answers.
And what date were you thinking of putting in the blank?
Um.
It says middle, uh, no later than four P M. on.
And I left it blank, I mean, it can be anytime, the Suckman want it two months from now or three months from now, it's just, we need it for the future. And I put it in there that we need it for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, not twenty twenty-four.
So you want Nancy June, you think?
Yeah, I guess, right.
In three months?
And.
Run it for a while and then have it in by the end of June, maybe?
Yeah, that's right, that, that should be enough time, right?
Yeah, I, I think, well, we can try it.
And, uh, so what day are we going? By what day?
Whatever the last meeting is in June. At four.
Nineteen, I was, well, I'll have to face that, but that's a holiday.
Oh, that's June nineteenth.
Will we, will we be meeting the eighteen?
June, um, do we, just wanna do it the Friday before?
June nineteenth is a holiday, will the Suckers be meeting that Tuesday?
Wednesday.
June nineteenth.
What do you mean on Wednesday?
June nineteen.
June nineteen.
It's the middle of the, middle of the week.
It's always on June nineteenth. The half set is a holiday, holiday.
Oh, it's on Wednesday.
Is that?
Juneteenth, that's it, ah, so what will we do?
So do we wanna just discuss that?
We're gonna meet on the eighteen, yeah.
Eighteenth, okay.
So what do we want for a deadline on these updates?
Eighteen.
The eighteen?
Yes.
Four o'clock, okay.
Yes. Already one June.
Yeah.
Well, sun out and we'll get it going. All right, thank you. Let's go with molecular license for.
Narrow escape.
Narrow escape. And I didn't know you served wine, so this is a renewal I read.
A renewal.
It's not a venue when you got your first one, maybe I was not. But I thought that was great, I was asking Suzette, what kind of alcohol did you wanna serve? Red wine, I said, that makes so much sense, is you could have a wine and cheese thing.
Yeah.
So do you have one of those, wine and cheese?
Well, we did, we, I said, we didn't sell a lot of the cheese place, we didn't sell a lot of wine either. I was open till six last summer in the hopes that people might come before dinner and do that. But we have had some events in the evening here and there, like the local author book, book club once a month and that's more, more likely where people have a glass of wine.
Are you open for like meetings like that?
Uh, we, we just did this for the winter, for something for people to come in and have something to do off-season and.
Sounds like a whole lot of fun for a meeting. I mean, not, not as like for a meeting, but it's, never.
Yeah, we have a lot of great local authors here and, um, so each month we've had, uh, chosen a book and the author comes in and does a reading and, you know, people get wine, a bottle, and I've had some.
What's your seating, your seating capacity then?
Twenty, but I actually, well, that's my license as well, but I actually only have seating for sixteen.
But you could have twenty.
I could have these, yeah, legally.
Well, it'd be too hard to get four more chairs. So, uh.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, all in favor? There you go.
And then should I just come, uh, every day to pick up?
Tomorrow, 'cause we, we decided in blue and then, um, just don't make costumes for you tomorrow morning. You're very welcome, thank you. Yeah, they're both, we both have two pens. We're making a wish.
This has to be.
Yes.
Well, we're lucky, yeah, we're both regulars.
Justin, do you wanna come in, uh, did you fill out your form that you had?
Yeah.
Okay, so bring it up and let's see what we can do with it, what we're supposed to do with it. I know that the state's always coming up a great.
Yeah, we did this a couple of years ago and they were fine with just the letter that you guys drafted forming, um, stating that you.
But now they have a form.
Now they have a form, yeah.
I got it.
I don't know which way to pass it to.
Start down there.
Um, so, uh, three A describes what, uh, every, all the different situations and it says if I was to open prior to December thirteenth, twenty eighteen, which I opened in twenty sixteen in December. So the rest of it wouldn't apply to me other than that box. I don't know why the letters, they already have on file, but I just do it every year. Hasn't been good enough, but I have to have it notarized instead of, I'm delaying the licensing process, so.